Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Plan of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Public, notice of this meeting has been published and posted and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. Confirm that with Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
No move.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right. So without objection, the agenda is approved. The minutes that were included in the packet are from September 7th, 2021. Anyone have any additions or deletions or corrections? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
No move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Without objection, the minutes are approved. At this time, we will open it up for citizens' comments, and I do have some comments to read into the record. Is there anyone else? Citizens' comments? None, okay. We received this from the Coastal Conservation League. It's, Dear Beaufort County, thank you for the opportunity to share comments on behalf of the Coastal Conservation League regarding the proposed rezoning of 56 acres on Gaston Road from T2R to C3 Neighborhood Mixed Use to allow development of 110 single-family units on the site. We respectfully ask the commission to deny this request. This was sent to the commission, but they want us to read it for the Natural Resource Committee, too, same comments. As laid out in the staff report, the request is not consistent with Beaufort County's existing 2010 Comprehensive Plan or the draft 2040 Comprehensive Plan before you this evening. Both documents identify this portion of the county as remaining rural in nature. The request would amount to significant increase in density from the 18 dwelling units that could be permitted under current zoning, and it would be incompatible with the surrounding area. Existing land uses in the area include rural residential, golf courses, and forestry. No neighboring or even nearby properties are zoned to support this kind of residential development. Rezoning this individual parcel could open the door to subsequent rezonings nearby, which would could change the rural character of the area and further strain the South Carolina 170 corridor. The Comprehensive Plan intentionally designates this area as rural to minimize strain on the schools and emergency services and to help protect water quality in the Okati and Colleton rivers. The future land use designation is correct, and we agree with the planning staff that the existing zoning should remain in place. Thank you for your time and consideration. Jesse White, South Coast Office Director. We have no other further public comments?
Madam Chair, you might want to make it clear if you're going to take comment from the applicant on this item when we get to that agenda item, or if you want to do it now.
Okay.
So it's up to you. The applicant is here, and they may want to speak to the application. I just don't know if you are going to do it now or when we get to that item.
I'll leave it up to the applicant. Would you rather do it now or wait till the presentation?
It's entirely your discretion. We're happy to accommodate either way.
Okay. So it is later on the agenda, so let's go forward, and we'll let you make comment when we get to it on the agenda.
And I'll be very brief.
Okay, thank you. All right. All right. We will follow the agenda, and number seven is a presentation on Pine View Preserve and Bailey Memorial Park conceptual plans. And this is Ms. Nagin from the Planning Department. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tiffany, can you put the... So while they're getting that up, just to give you a brief history of this, because this is actually the first time you're seeing this, because the contract amount to do the conceptual plan did not fall into the amount to come forward to committee or council. So last summer, we did a request, well, I should say, last October, we did a request for qualifications to hire an environmental consultant to do conceptual plans for both Pine View and Bailey Tracks. Those two properties did have a bit of donation money that came to us from the sellers of those properties, and so we're using that towards the initial planning. In November, Design Workshop was hired to complete those conceptual plans. Due to COVID, we had some online comments from the public. We presented some information to the public in a survey in February, and then based on that information and input we received from the public, we received over 250 responses to the survey, so that was really great. And we drafted some conceptual plans, and then we presented those plans to the public at open house workshops, both onsite in the All Joy Community and then also near where the Okati River Park, or, I'm sorry, near where Pine View currently is. And we did those in May. We had three workshops in May, so get them all confused. But we did get some additional comments during those open house workshops and then tweaked the plans to those. So today is the plan for both of those properties that I'm very excited about and happy to present to you here, to see if there's any comments, questions, other concerns. So the first one up there is the Pine View property. And that, the overall one, I'm going to have them switch to page two here in a second, but the overall plan shows an entrance area that we are adjusting off of the existing entrance. Right now, the existing entrance is kind of a co-driveway between the neighbor's house and our property, and I felt that could end up becoming maybe a user conflict area, so I wanted to make sure we moved our driveway up into our property and away from that kind of shared property line. So we've moved it slightly north, but still within our property line, and we'll have some earthen trails that you can see outlined there. The creek comes in very close to one section of the property, so we have a little side trail there where we're going to do a little viewing dock. The creek is not deep enough to really allow for any kind of kayak or non-motorized vessel, but it is a very nice place where people could go and potentially fish at high tide or just enjoy the view. We also have a couple of wildlife blinds that could be put next to some of the isolated wetlands. There's a very unique habitat on this property where we have these isolated depressional wetlands that are mostly marsh with a nice tree edge, and since it's a unique habitat for the county, we definitely want to get people out there to see the wildlife that you might see there, a lot of egrets and herons and such. So if you go to page two, we'll zoom in on the entrance area a little bit. That's where most of the infrastructure is going to take place. The rest of the property, all the trails, are going to either be earthen or boardwalk sections through the wetlands if areas are a little too muddy. The entrance area, though, we have, similar to what we did at Widgeon Point, an asphalt drive-in, an automatic timed gate to open and close at dawn to dusk hours, pervious parking lot with an ADA parking space, some bike racks, and a restroom. The restroom is going to be a prefabricated concrete, kind of vault-like restroom, but it's, there is an ability to connect that vault to sewer, so it's not going to be like a septic tank. It'll be connected to the sewer line that's out there off of Sam's Point Road. So we'll have water fountains on that as well. So that's the main part of the infrastructure with a split rail fence, kind of keeping people within that so that there aren't cars trying to drive off into the trails and whatnot. So very, very basic. We did not receive a ton of feedback for this property, but all the feedback that we did receive from the public, they were just happy and excited to be able to get out on the property, and of course, the trails are going to be wide enough to allow for pedestrians and bicyclists.
So can we take questions about this one first?
Absolutely.
And then we'll go to the next one. Any questions?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
If I couldn't, thank you, Chairman. One of the comments I heard from people with bicycle trail, and you have that, you have a trail, is it a robust kind of trail or is it just a trail?
It's an earthen trail. Like, we have, at Widgeon Point, the nature trail. It'll be eight to 10 feet wide, meandering through the trees, taking advantage of the existing roads that are out there, roads that are out there, and then connecting them into making loops, so people can take their mountain bikes out on the trail. What we are not doing is creating ramps and dips and jumps and banks. Like, that kind of constructed mountain biking trail is not a passive recreation activity. But mountain bikers are absolutely permitted to come to the property and bike on the earthen trails that we install.
Oh, why wouldn't that be a passive park specification with the dips and everything else? I mean, what's the difference?
Right. The difference is the type of construction that it is and where those type of activities like to occur. We do, because this is a rural and critical property, my first protection is for the conservation nature of the property, and so I'm balancing recreation on the property with conservation use. So I've been asked to put miles and miles and miles of trails out on this very relatively small property, and it's just, it's not conducive with the neighborhood surrounding it, the conservation nature of the property, the potential for erosion in the isolated wetlands or along the creek bank, the possibility of people going off trail. There's a lot of issues to have to kind of consider, and considering this property was purchased for conservation of the natural resource, I do have to create that balance.
Typically, in these particular situations, you don't want to alter the natural topography of the land. You want to preserve the natural lay of the land, and that's what Stephanie has endeavored to do with this. Mountain biking and the amount and the type of dirt you'd have to bring in there to do that, to get those slopes and all of that to stay put without eroding away, probably would be a detriment to the natural lay of the property, and we don't propose doing that. However, if you all want us to look into that, we can do that, but there's going to be plenty of off-road biking activities out there. People that want to mountain bike, there's a reason why it's called mountain biking. We're not the mountains, so, you know.
And the reason I ask this question, because I will probably get phone calls on it, and I won't be able to...
Yeah.
Particularly why we're not considering that, and that's the reason I'm asking the question.
Fully understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? I had a question.
What about Gray's Hill? I mean, couldn't we do something?
Which one is that?
Is your Gray's Hill out? Where there is tempo, that's what he was making a joke about my comment.
Elevation.
The three feet of elevation?
Yeah. Damn. Wetlands, are they all saltwater, or are there some freshwater wetlands?
The isolated depressions are all freshwater marshes, which is why it's kind of a unique habitat in the area.
Any other questions?
Just quickly, Ms. Chairman, what is the lineal feet? How many miles are in these trails? Have any idea?
Yes, I believe we have two and a half miles at Pine View.
Okay.
That's more than Crystal Lake.
If you do all the loops.
Yeah. Crystal Lake's not that one.
Thank you.
Okay, you want to go on to the next one, then we'll vote on them together.
Sure thing. So Bailey Memorial Park, and I'm sorry, I forgot to mention where Pine View was earlier. Bailey Memorial Park is off of Confederate Avenue in the All Joy Community in Bluffton. It is a county-zoned property, kind of in the middle of other Bluffton zone properties, so it's a little bit of a unique situation there. Again, we received information from the public about, specifically about, the entrance, and so we made some adjustments to the plan, and I'll talk about that when we get to page two, but for the overall, we do have approximately 55 acres surrounded by residential development. The property, just north of our property line, is also vacant land at the moment, although it's been up for sale for quite some time. The property, similar to Pine View, will have earthen trails. Some of the trails may have some boardwalks when they go through some of the wetter areas. Bailey has a lot more hydroic soils and wetlands, freshwater swamp than Pine View does. It definitely has more of that bayhead hardwood swamp forest in it than those isolated depressions. So we may have some boardwalking to do, a wildlife bird blind or two. And then on the west, wait, east property line, I am proposing a fence, a black-coated chain-link fence to go down basically our entire west line, and I'm proposing that because we currently have some existing encroachment issues with some of the neighbors putting their storage or boats or trash or what have you kind of right on that edge, and I want to prevent, I want to prevent that encroachment from continuing further and further into the property. So I'm going to work with whoever I can to try and get those encroachments removed, if I can, but sometimes that's not always done in a very timely manner.
Try to get what removed?
The encroachments that we have, the dumpsters and the boat trailers and that kind of stuff.
What road is that on that you'll put the fence? Is that...
It's not on a road. It's actually behind, it's behind a whole bunch of houses and residential living area, so it's a little difficult to get to. So on page two is a close-up.
There's something on that's not related to this. We need a minute to get page two up.
Page two is a close-up of the entrance, and similarly to Pine View, we do have that asphalt entrance right off of the road with the gate and then a pervious parking lot. One of the comments we got from the surrounding community was to have some golf cart parking, because apparently there's a lot of people that drive golf carts down in the All Joy Community, and so we did add some smaller, shorter golf cart spaces that'll be signed, golf cart parking versus other car parking. And then ADA parking space, bike rack, our entrance sign, and then a split rail fence surrounding the parking area to keep vehicles confined.
Will it be a bathroom?
No, we decided not to put a restroom here, given the location of being so close to downtown Bluffton and being right next to other residential's if people are coming from their home.
Yeah.
Surely, it's less of a need than people who might be coming from further away.
Any other questions about it? Is this in Mark Larson's district? Or...
I think so.
No other questions? Entertain a motion to move both of these, they need to go to full council, correct?
I was, I guess I was just giving a presentation. I didn't know if they needed to be approved unnecessarily or just obtain...
The funds are...
Do we make sure that we are complying with the restrictions, the deed restrictions that have been placed on this property when we purchased it?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't, there's no action, just a presentation?
I don't think there's any action necessarily, not until we, once we...
Award the contract for construction.
Yeah, once we start awarding construction contracts, actually do the work, you all will see it, and it'll go through the appropriate channels based on the cost of that work.
Excellent. And I'm currently getting, the original RFQ that we did October last year included a provision to hire the same consultant to do the Phase Two of the planning, and so they are working on a proposal for me now, and then that'll come to committee again for, it'll probably end up being at a cost that would have to go to council, so you'll see that hopefully coming up in November.
Great, thank you. You're both be wonderful assets, I'm sure.
Thank you.
All right. And number eight is approval of an ordinance on a zoning amendment, rezoning request for 56 acres at 60 Gaston Plantation Road from T2 Rural to C3 Neighborhood Mixed Use. I would note that the planning commission voted to deny this. I'm sure that will be in Mr. Merchant's report, but, and we'll let the applicant speak after you speak.
Okay. Well, thank you. Good afternoon. This is a rezoning request for 60 Gaston Plantation Road and its 56 acres. The current zoning is rural, and the applicant is proposing to change the zoning to C3 Neighborhood Mixed Use. Under rural, the main difference, well, there's several differences, but I would say in the case of this particular rezoning, the main issue here is that under rural, there's 18 dwelling units that would be permitted. Under C3 Neighborhood Mixed Use, if the maximum single-family density was exercised, it would be 145 units, so it's quite an increase in residential density. We had, at your request, we have a video, a drone video, we can show you right now of the property.
And just so people in the audience know, we do this so that people on council get a feel of what the area around it looks like in case they don't know or haven't been there.
So that's looking at Calawassee Road, and this is looking into the property. Once again, we're at Calawassee Road, looking at the intersection of Gaston Plantation Road. It has very small frontage on Calawassee Road, but it expands and goes deep into the property, and you can see there through the trees, you know, the majority of the property there. But currently, it's very rural, very wooded. And as you can see from the aerial footage, the surrounding area is also heavily wooded and very little development. And this is in a small part of the county, basically between 170 and Calawassee Island. There's a large area here, and I'll show a map, kind of giving some context of our land use policies in the area. Okay, I think that's it. I don't know if that helps. If we need to revisit that, let me know. So, as I said earlier, this would really result in an increase in density. The comprehensive plan has this area, its future land use designation is rural. One of the things that we required in the staff report was, because of the change in density, it would trigger a traffic impact analysis. The applicant provided that. The impact, the TIA basically indicated this would add about 1,136 new trips on Calawassee Road, but that number didn't really change very much at the intersection, you know, as far as level of service. The biggest issue that was indicated in the TIA was that there are site issues at the entrance of Gaston Plantation Road onto Calawassee Drive because there's a bend in the road, and so that was the main concern of the TIA. We contacted the school district. They wrote back, of course, to let us know that the schools that would be serving the site are already at capacity, especially Okati Elementary, and there's a lot of development going on in their attendance zone, but in addition, the middle school and high school for this particular site are very close to capacity. It is important to note that based on their proposal of 110 single-family houses with impact fees, that would produce about $1,382,000, so there is, you know, now some money generated to offset that need. And this slide right here, our main concern with this rezoning is that along the 170 corridor, really between Old Field and the Broad River Bridge, this area in the comprehensive plan is designated as rural, and this was the case going back to, I would say, the 1999, or 1997 comp plan, the 2010 comp plan, and then our current comp plan. The one anomaly in this area is Calawassee Island, which is a PUD that was approved, I believe, in the early 80s. You know, but Spring Island, even though it's developed, it's developed at a very low density and consistent with our rural zoning. And I would say that that particular land use along that corridor, we recognize that there's a lot going on in Jasper County and Hardyville, but one of the things that we can do in Beaufort County is manage growth along that corridor, with the main concern of water quality in the Okati and Colleton Rivers. Traffic, we have increased traffic volumes along 170, and that's a concern as well. Traffic, we have increased traffic volumes along 170, and that's a concern as well. In addition to retaining rural character in that separation between northern and southern Beaufort County. So at this time, this land use policy remains, and as you can see on this map, to change this to, you know, the yellow right in the middle, is really kind of setting a new precedent. And I will echo, you know, our planning commission voted unanimously to deny this application. And one of the commissioners said, and I think that this is, you know, kind of illustrates the concerns that we have, this is not approving 100 or, you know, 130 new houses. This could trigger approving thousands of houses, because it may lead to additional rezonings in the area. So with that, you know, our, the staff recommendation is not to approve, and the planning commission as well made that recommendation.
Thank you. We'll let the applicant make some remarks, and then I'll open it up for questions for you.
Okay.
Thank you. And if you'll just state your name for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Nicole Scott. I'm an attorney with Nexon Pruitt in Charleston, South Carolina, on King Street, and I'm here representing the applicant. I'm going to keep my comments very brief, but I'm here to answer any questions y'all may have, as is the applicant, the property owner, and the engineer, if we can get to the point where we need that. I know y'all know the history of this property. This is not the first time I've been in front of council and this committee regarding this property, and the campground that has been proposed on there, and the opposition to that campground. The applicant is exploring options. They have been approached both by campground operators and also residential developers who are interested in this property. And given the public comments that we have heard through the campground process, the applicant thought it was prudent to explore a residential potential development, in order to maybe come to some sort of plan that would work for potentially everyone. So that's how we got here. From what I understand with talking with members of the planning department, we can't do T2RN because of the way the ordinance is drafted. So really, our only option to get the density that they would need to, apples and apples to what they could make off of the property as a campground, is to go to a C3, which we do understand is not consistent with the comprehensive plan. Our proposal, however, of an accompanying development agreement, I think we could achieve consistency with the comp plan, if that's something that this committee and council wanted to do. But we do have an approved conceptual plan for the campground that can go forward, should this rezoning not go forward. And we understand that planning department, planning commission, and this council are abound by certain things and certain considerations. But that's the background of how we got here. We're open to suggestions if council does not want a campground there, would rather see something else there that would result in a return that's equivalent to what they could make on the campground. But if this rezoning doesn't go forward, the campground will go forward.
Thank you. Okay, I'll open it up for questions for Mr. Merchant. Any questions?
Motion.
No, I don't see any other questions. Let me make sure, nobody on line has any questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion. Yes, sir?
Motion to deny the request to rezone.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Yeah, this is, it's an interesting request. I understand that the campground has got conceptual approval, which I guess is a good start. And I guess that's consistent with the proposed 2040 comprehensive plan, and then the existing one, and the one before that. So that gives me some comfort. I mean, this primitive campground, it's called a primitive campground, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure I know why. Maybe only primitive people can go there, I don't know. But anyways, that is something that can be done there. It does conflict, I think Rob mentioned it conflicts with every comprehensive plan, future land use element of every comprehensive plan we've ever created, including the 2040 comprehensive plan, which is in draft form. It's in a protected area because of the impact, potential impact on the Okati and the Collin Rivers. And we've spent, I think most of us know, we've spent close to $100 million protecting the Okati alone so far. I'm probably, that's probably a little light, but close to $100 million. So for these reasons alone, I'm going to say no, I'm, I'm going to say no and vote against it. But I'm happy to entertain any additional thoughts the applicant may have.
Right, Jim. And I just follow Paul's comment. You know, the planning staff talked about if we open this up, what will happen to this whole entire area, there's no question about that. And one of the sentiment I've gotten since I've been on council is that there's a lot of people who have moved here, and they really want us to close the door. So you were here making a proposal, and if council move forward with this and grant you this, I can tell you that four, five years from now, there'll be a whole lot of massive people coming before us, wondering why we did what we did. If I'm not mistaken, and Rob, you can help me with this, is that the campsite came before us recently with an increase in numbers. Am I not mistaken? They wanted more numbers. They have the approval to move forward with the primitive site, campsite, but they wanted to increase that number to a larger number and stuff, and I think we denied that. If that's, that's not good. Clarify if you.
Yeah, so essentially what happened is the Toskies presented a plan to develop a semi-developed campground on this particular piece of property, that required 100-foot buffers around the perimeter of the property, and a reduced number of campsites as a result of doing a semi-developed campground. The property owners out there hired members of the zoning board of appeals to appeal the staff's decision to the planning commission to overturn the semi-development.
That's right.
Campground. So I went to, met with Tom Keviny, and we agreed with the position of the legal counsel that a semi-developed campground at that particular time was not allowed underneath T2R zoning district, that the Toskies could only do a primitive campground. Well, that kind of backfired on the community out there, because they thought by telling the Toskies that they could do a primitive campground, that they would abandon their plans and go away. But essentially what occurred is the Toskies amended their plan to add more campsites, because the buffer under a primitive campground is only 30 feet. And they could add more tent sites to the property, and that's exactly what they have done. We have been in a legal wrangling with those attorneys for many, many months. And Tom Keviny, I think, uses some sort of term, is that these attorneys that are representing the community out there have tied this up in some sort of Gordian knot, I think is the term Tom Keviny used, and are using the development code to basically strangle the financial viability of the Toskies, hoping that they will abandon their plans. And, I mean, staff's done everything we can to keep it moving forward. We're in court right now, the zoning board of appeals and the planning commission has found in our favor, staff's favor. And Tom Taylor, who was working with Chet Williams, a member of the zoning board of appeals, has essentially appealed that decision to court, and that's where it stands currently. And that's why you're going to see, right after this, an amendment to the community development code on campgrounds, to try to clean all of that up for the, for future campground developers.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you for that history. Do you have any other comments, Councilman Glover?
No, no, that's it.
Okay, so we have a motion, who's second? Do we have a second?
Yeah, make sure everybody understands it's a motion to deny.
It's a motion to deny the zoning that's proposed, which is three, C3 neighborhood mixed use.
Madam Chairwoman, if I could just add something real quick.
Yes, ma'am.
The applicant's asked me to clarify something in response to what.
Councilmember Somerville has said, the plan, since we initially, and it's a difference that may not make a difference in your analysis, but just to get it on the record, the plan that we initially submitted to, for the rezoning, was at 110 homes. They have reduced that to 68. And again, it's a difference that may not make a difference in your analysis, but I did at least want to get that on the record.
Well, thank you for that clarification. Do we have any other questions from other council members? All right, do we need a roll call vote, or without objection? Okay, I hear without objection, to deny the rezoning request from T2 rural to C3 neighborhood mixed use. Okay, so this has been, this rezoning request has been denied. All right, so we're going to go on to number nine, which is approval of an ordinance regarding tax amendment to the community development code, section 3.1.60, that's the consolidated use table, and section 4.1.190, recreation facility campgrounds, to revise the campground standards. And Mr. Merchant, are you going to do this presentation?
Yeah, Rob's going to do the presentation, but before you all do, I want to make it clear the language on the agenda. What you all ask us to do, this isn't an approval of an ordinance regarding that, because you've already given that second reading.
Oh.
At second reading, you've asked, you asked us to evaluate whether or not extending the period of time that someone could reside in the campground, could do that. And Rob's going to make recommendations on that tonight, so that, this afternoon, so that you all can consider that, to see if you want to make an amendment to the ordinance at the next council meeting prior to the third reading.
Because it did say 30 days, and there was a suggestion to extend it.
That's correct.
Let's hear that.
Okay, yes, yeah, so it went to second reading at council, and at that time, I believe it was, John Trask made the comment that, you know, he really felt that that was too restrictive, that some people travel and they might want to be here for most of a season. The purpose of the limit in stay is to keep campgrounds from serving as de facto housing, you know, and so, and the other thing is that we have a range, you know, in the existing draft that went for first reading, I believe it was 30 consecutive days in a 45-day period. So what that does is eliminates, I guess, somebody from, you know, leaving the campground, turning around the gate, and coming back in, staying another, you know, you know.
Another 30 days.
Yeah, another 30 days. We looked at, as far as the intent of the limit in stay, and we did not see a problem with increasing it from 30 to 60, because it still was enough of a safeguard. I believe that the number, there's a magic number, is it 70?
82, is it 82?
I said 82.
82. So we want to make sure, I think that once you stay beyond that point, it's no longer considered transient, it's considered permanent, you know, in terms of tax. And so we're well within that window with the way the current language is. So what we're recommending is to increase it from 30 to 60 days for all three types of campgrounds.
So it would be amended, and then at our next council meeting, it will stand as amended? No, or we'll have to go back to first?
You don't need to take any action today, as if you all by consensus decide what you want to do, someone just needs to make a motion prior to third reading at council meeting next Monday, to amend it on third reading, to add those provisions in.
Okay.
As to how you all want to feel. We don't need to take any action today.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? It seems pretty straightforward. Yep, okay.
Thank you for looking at that.
Yeah, I'm glad, that's good, very good. Okay, the next one is, two people are going to present, correct? Mr. Merchant and Ms. Juliana? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Adoption of envisioned Beaufort County 2040 comprehensive plan, and Beaufort County connects bicycle and pedestrian plan 2021 as an appendix to the plan. And this has been long awaited, and we're very glad to hear about it.
Good, we're excited to. I have a presentation, I just want to kind of give an overview of the plan and the process, so we can get started. But as you had mentioned, we had two actually kind of parallel projects working, the comprehensive plan, but at the same time, we have been working with the bicycle and pedestrian community and the other municipalities in Beaufort County, and also Jasper County, in a regional bike and pedestrian plan. And as that advanced forward, in the timing of the comprehensive plan, we realized that it made sense to adopt that second item as an appendix. And so that's why the two items that were originally two agenda items merged into one. Right, does this work here? This advance.
That's me.
Oh, okay. If that's the plan, that's not the, it would be the power point. Oh, wait. No, this is the second presentation. All right, let me see if this works. No, I don't think so.
Tell me next slide.
Okay, I'll just let you know. All right, well, I, we're pleased to bring forward the 2040 Beaufort County Comprehensive Plan. And I wanted to share this slide, we shared this with the planning commission, that it, you know, really gives weight to this document and the importance. These are different quotes from the APA website, and it says, "The comprehensive plan is a foundational policy document for local government." So really, it's kind of, you know, where, you know, we derive our policy and decision-making. It's an important tool for coordinating local decision-making. The local comprehensive planning process gives a community an opportunity to step back and see the big picture. The comprehensive plan is a legal foundation that legitimizes local development regulations. That's a really important one. In South Carolina, you need an up-to-date comprehensive plan in order to have zoning. An up-to-date comprehensive plan provides a measure of certainty to landowners and developers, and reduces the likelihood of arbitrary decisions by local officials. So I think, you know, it's important, it's not only our vision, but also having a very well-defined vision is helpful to the development community as well, to know what our expectations are. And then the comprehensive plan process makes for an informed constituency. So the more that we are out there promoting the comprehensive plan, the more your constituency and our, you know, citizens of Beaufort County could be aware of what the big issues are. In framing what a comprehensive plan does, I remember somebody made the statement that we all love Beaufort County. And if you start with that premise, you know, that people who live here, we have a very large diversity of opinions, but we love our county. And if you were to ask people to define what it is they love about Beaufort County, I think you would find some common themes. You know, they love the natural environment, and the climate, and the historic communities that we have, you know, the small-town way of life, or what remains of it, our rural areas. There, you know, those would be things that I think you would hear from a large group of people, and that really provides the basis, where are those commonalities, and do we have a shared vision for Beaufort County? And I believe that we do, you know, from going through this process. And also, I think that most of us who live here have very, not only, you know, we know that what makes our county great, but we also know what threats are out there, and how we can save the things that we love about the county in a very dynamic and changing environment. And that's really what a comprehensive plan does, and outlines steps of what we can do as a local community, especially as county council through decision-making, to preserve those things. This plan. This plan in particular, and this is something that we're excited about, is we're really made up of three documents. We have the actual 2040 Comprehensive Plan, which in this case is a much more abbreviated document that provides context for each of the chapters, but immediately launches into, what does all this mean in terms, you know, and then goes into recommendations and action items. Typically, in a comprehensive plan, there are pages and pages of maps and data and numbers and charts. We put those things in the Beaufort County Atlas. The idea was that, you know, those who want to dig in deeper and know, you know, what assets we have in Beaufort County, what are our natural resources, where are they located, you know, what are our, you know, you know, what is our economy made up of? All of those things are in the Beaufort County Atlas. Hopefully, in a more visually friendly presentation that would engage readers. But if you want to get down to the heart of what the plan is, you go to the document, 2040 Comprehensive Plan. And then finally, we have a third document, which is the 2040 Action Plan Playbook. And so, with each of the recommendations, we have policy recommendations that are more, you know, positions that the county takes, but there are also actionable items, you know, things that we could say that we are doing, and they either check a box or it's an ongoing action. All of those things are in a matrix in this third document, the Action Playbook. And they are organized in such a way as whether they are, you know, short-term, mid-term, or long-term and are prioritization, what the cost or difficulty to implement them are, and then what entities will take action on those items. In addition, that Action Playbook has our 10-year CIP. So the hope is that we have a good document to track implementation of the plan. All of this is, you know, kind of looking back and seeing where our successes and maybe where our challenges have been in past comprehensive plans. So with all of that, we're hoping this is a document that we, as a department, as a planning commission, and ultimately as county council, we can kind of take direction from and move forward. Go to the next slide. In the plan, we have three, I would say, underlying themes that are woven through it. One of them is resilience, and this is something that is, I would say, is a new direction for the county, given that we have had a very dynamic last five years. I think we've had a little bit of a break this year, but, you know, we have had a lot of storms, a lot of flooding, and, you know, so we've taken a look at what steps the county can take to prepare for, you know, our dynamic coastal environment. This is also a new requirement in the state-enabling legislation that we have. It's not necessarily a chapter, but that resilience is woven into a plan. So we believe that we have done that through this. Another item is equitable or equitability, and looking at, especially when we look at the delivery of services or our land use policies, making sure that we are providing equal opportunity to all people or that our actions are not inadvertently disadvantaging one group over another. It becomes a lens to view kind of our policy and our actions in the comprehensive plan. And then finally, unique to place, this is really building off of what, in our Community Development Code, we put a lot of emphasis on the development of communities, of walkable communities. We have, you know, a diverse built environment in Beaufort County and how we build on that. So those are really kind of three themes worked through the document. And we have labeled when we have an action item or, you know, a policy recommendation, an R or an E or a P after it. So when you look through the document, that kind of explains. Go to the next slide. You can keep going. Engage in a community. Many of you remember, we began this process in earnest at the beginning of 2020, and we're real excited in March with two kickoff meetings. And then all of a sudden, we had the carpet or rug pulled out from under us, you know, with COVID. But we started off the process with some, you know, community meetings, one north of the Broad, one south of the Broad, and had an online survey as a result of that. And then, of course, COVID hit, and I spent a lot of that time working with our consultant design workshop to figure out, where do we go from here? And then that was the time that we put together a lot of our background information. And as we began to understand the new landscape here with COVID, we had a series of, go to the next slide, online engagements. One dealt with the Green Print, which that document is, a lot of the recommendations are very much interwoven with our land use recommendations here. And then we had a second workshop, that was in August 2020, and then the second workshop was on growth management and economic development. At that time, we realized that we needed to go out in the communities at this point. And so we held, if you can go to the next slide, three in-person socially-distanced workshops. These are more done in an open house fashion to try to limit crowds. But we did have a good turnout in each of these workshops, especially in Penn Center. We had quite a few people filtering through the room over a four-hour timeframe. So we, at that point, we drafted a comprehensive plan and we released that to the public on, in April of 2021. And at that time, we realized that, that's why it's good, that we still, even though we are opening this up for public comment, we realized that we really needed to go back out in the communities. One of the things that we learned through the online engagement was that our, you know, we had a lot of good inputs and a lot of high numbers as far as the number of people, but we were not, it was not, you know, making up the good cross-section of the county. I think that, you know, we had a lot of people who, you know, were older, you know, and so younger people were not necessarily being reached, people who lived out in rural parts of the county were not being reached. And so, we really targeted with these in-person workshops in June to go out into the communities. We had one in June 7th at Burton Wells Park, and then, or no, June 8th at Burton Wells Park, June 10th at St. Helena Public Library. Both of those were very well-attended. There was also a joint meeting with two of our council members, Somerville and Glover, along with the school board, but the topic of that meeting was the comprehensive plan. And so, we got a lot of good input there as well. Staff took in, you know, all the comments we received online in these meetings. We put into a huge matrix, kind of worked through, you know, how to take each of the comments into account. And we reworked the documents, had our consultant design workshop, make all the edits. And then we finally released a revised plan to the public on August 31st. And so that's what's before you. And I'll just give an overview of what a typical chapter looks like. And I think I'll skip over the synopsis of each chapter, but I'll leave that up to, you know, if people have questions. But the way, and I had mentioned earlier, that we kind of launch into, immediately into, I would say, the heart of the plan. So chapters are arranged. This is natural environment. We start with core values, what it is that we value about the natural environment. If you go to the next slide. Then we launch into context. So really, this is taking all the data that's in the Atlas and really saying, well, so what? What does all that mean? And so, through reading these paragraphs, it kind of gives you an idea about what natural resources we have, what are the threats and what actions have we taken? Where do we need to build off those actions? And all of that serves as a launching point, if you go to the next slide, for when we get into our strategies and actions. And so in this section, each of the strategies are kind of in these bold green. And then, those are more like policy statements. There are things you, that kind of give you govern how to take action or how, you know, how to think about an issue, but they're not necessarily things that you would check off the box. Like an example in transportation would be, you know, adopt a level of service D. You know, that's not something you implement in one action. That's something that guides decisions. When we get to the action items that are in this chapter, those are things that are more actionable. And so, that's another thing, we didn't really draw that distinction in our old comprehensive plan. And it led to kind of an overwhelming laundry list of things. And there were kind of a mixture of policy statements, action items, and that's one of the goals in this, is to kind of get away from that and, you know, really make it easy to use the document. I'm going to just skip through these slides, if you can keep going and I'll. But this kind of shows you the kind of highlights of each of the chapters. And we can go revisit this if you have questions. One, if we can stop here. One of the most important parts of the comprehensive plan is its future land use plan. As, you know, we had talked about earlier, it really guides our decisions. You know, when somebody comes to us with a zoning, you know, a zoning amendment, this is the map we use to kind of determine, is it consistent with the comprehensive plan? Or at least one of the first items we go to. And so this is the, we have a future land use map that kind of sets that framework. In addition, this map, we have our growth boundaries that we share with the city of Beaufort and the town of Port Royal. But we also introduce the idea of two additional growth boundaries. One, we have initiated some conversations with the town of Yamasee about where they see future growth occurring. And that's a conversation we would like to continue in the future, especially as they, they're supposed to embark on their comprehensive plan in the near future. And then also Hardyville and Jasper County along the 170 corridor. Those seem to be two areas where growth boundaries would really go a long way to kind of help take away some uncertainty and I think really kind of get us all on the same page as what our expectations are for growth in those areas. Go to the next slide. You can keep going. And this is an example, we did work with the town of Yamasee about kind of what their vision is because they've had some large-scale annexations, you know, Binden and then the two more recent, Motley, and I'm trying to remember the third one, but they're, you know, very large tracts of land. And I'm sitting down with their staff, they have a clerk, Matt Garns, who is very interested in working regionally. And so we see a really, a good opportunity to work with them and try to figure out what our shared vision is for this area. And then finally, if you can go on, the action plan, I kind of mentioned that earlier, but this is what it looks like. It has each of the action items that are in each of the chapters. With that, you know, as far as the amount of money, the, when the timing is, and then who would implement these actions. And this kind of helps in tracking the document and in giving direction about where we need to, where we need to focus. And then finally, we have the CIP. We work with the engineering department. But we have a 10-year capital improvements plan, which of course, any kind of plan like this, it gets a little more sketchy as you go on in the future, but this provides a good basis for, you know, taking that and then updating to a four-year CIP and then a one-year, you know, list of capital improvements. This becomes a good framework to work with. We're hoping that this time, our 10-year CIP is a little more grounded in what our revenues are, where I think last time was a little more of a wish list. But that's always the hope, is that we try to take a very sober and clear view of what our needs are and what we can afford to pay for. And I believe, okay, next step. So we're at October 4th, Natural Resources Committee. And depending on the action of the committee today, then, you know, this document would go forward for three readings of county council. So that's where we are right now. And if you, I don't know if you would wish to comment or ask questions about this before we go to the bike-pen plan?
Sure, I think that'd be good. All right, anyone have questions? Yes, no?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment. Rob, I want to commend you for putting forth a, I think, a good document, and commend you for your ability to listen with, with, I'm not going to say emotionalist, but being able to listen and to cipher, decipher everything that was said and try to put it into a nice presentation to move this counting forward 2024. I would also want to commend you for putting together an action plan in the back so that we will have a guide to follow. And at some point in time in the future, if something is not done, it's not because, it wouldn't be because it's not in the plan. It's because council or the community failed to respond. So I just want to commend you for that. I look forward to reading through the document going forward before the third and final reading. If I have any comments, I'll make it at that time and stuff. But I just want to commend you for what you have done and your staff, you and your staff. I'm not, I'm not going to give it all to you. I think you've got a good team behind you and stuff, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I'd like to echo what Councilwoman Glover said. You did an outstanding job of taking what the public had to say and putting it in the document. And also during some very trying times, because those first meetings back in October of 2020, we didn't have a lot of people. And then all of a sudden, in the spring, we had a lot of people a year, more than a year later. So, almost a year later. And I think you did an outstanding job with your staff and your consultant to incorporate what the public said and working with the other local governments too, so that we were all hopefully protecting what we love in Beaufort County.
Okay, entertain a motion to move this forward?
So moved.
Okay. Councilwoman Somerville, and then second by Councilwoman Glover. Any discussion? All right, without objection, this will move forward for first, first reading.
Thank you. I also want to mention, I, Juliana's sitting here. She was, she came in, I would say in the 11th hour, but was a real big help, along with Noah Krebs, who moved on to Port Royal, and Libby Anderson, and our whole staff. I will say, one of the meetings, they all came out in force to help out. And so I do want to bring a lot of recognition to our staff. They've been wonderful through this whole process.
They have, yeah. Okay. Now we're going to talk about the appendix to the plan.
Yes, Madam Chair, we are. We're going to talk about the Beaufort County Connects Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan 2021, and I do have a presentation. Thank you, Tiffany.
There's a lot of interest in this countywide, I think.
Yes, there is, which makes it a really fun project to work on, to have so much feedback from our county as a whole. So, yeah. Okay, so the Beaufort County Connects Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan 2021 is the product of a, just over, probably close to a two-year effort now. In fall of 2019, a task force convened. The task force is made up of municipal representatives from the municipalities within Beaufort County, including representatives from Jasper County and Hardyville. We also had bicycle and advocacy group representatives, so the East Coast Greenway was a part of this. Friends of the Spanish Moss Trail, representatives from Bike Walk Hilton Head Island. And we also had, the Coastal Conservation League was involved, as well as independent members of the community who are bicycle and pedestrian advocates. And they all got together to create the plan that is before you all this afternoon, and we can go to the next slide. And what this plan does is it helps bring more bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure generally to Beaufort County. And there's a lot of really great benefits as a result of this. It improves our health, both our physical and mental health. I think we can all relate. Last year was a really good example of why we need access to safe facilities outdoors, to get around, to walk, to bike, to use your scooter or skateboard, whatever it is, especially when we were all going through lockdown situations during COVID last year. It also helps improve the health of our environment by moving short trips out of cars into bicycles and walking. I myself walk to work because I have safe infrastructure to do so. And I know that some of my colleagues bicycle to work as well. And so, what we want to do is help increase that, so we can lessen our carbon footprint countywide, protect our environmental and natural resources, and keep people safe, which is a little bit further down there on the list. But when you have facilities for people to use, they aren't on the roads, putting their lives at risk out there alongside cars. It also increases access to these types of facilities, but also what these facilities connect to. So if you are in a household that doesn't have a car, doesn't have the resources to have a car, you aren't old enough to drive yet, or you're not comfortable driving, you can still get to where you might need to go, whether that be your grocery store, schools, jobs, parks. Our hospital down here is just off of the Spanish Moss Trail, so places like that, bringing people easier access to those areas regardless of what, what resources they might have handy. It also increases your sense of community in place, bringing your community together. You see your neighbors more regularly, you get a tighter knit group and feel in your neighborhood. Improves safety, reducing those collisions with bicyclists and pedestrians on our major roadways, getting them onto safer facilities. roadways, getting them onto safer facilities, and then it drives economic success. And I think we have some really good examples here in Beaufort County, Hilton Head being one of the most obvious. You've got 60 miles of public pathways on Hilton Head, people are coming out for the beaches, but they can park and just get around on foot and by bicycle there, and you do see that reflected in a lot of the reviews on Hilton Head from visitors who come here to really enjoy those bike-ped pathways. But the Spanish Moss Trail here in northern Beaufort County is another really great example. It brings in 50,000 visitors and residents annually using the trail, and of those visitors, about 25% of them are coming from outside of a 50-mile radius of Beaufort. So it's bringing people in, and bike, bike and ped in general is a growing tourism industry in the, in the nation. I was reading earlier, in 2017, it brought in $83 billion to the United States, so it's growing, and that's exciting, and we can reap the benefits of that. So that's why we're planning for bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure and expanding it in Beaufort County, and we can go to the next. And throughout this process, some of the really obvious objectives that we ran into is that we want to increase connections first off. I think that's kind of a no-brainer when you're taking a look at this. We want to bring people to the places that they need to get with bicycle and pedestrian facilities, linking them to their jobs, their schools, churches, parks, wherever they'd like to go. We also want to make walking and biking more routine for people. And a part of the process of building this plan, we had our task force that informed and gave a lot of initial input, and then we went out into the community with a survey exercise. And this survey brought in almost 2,000 responses from the community, which is pretty incredible. So as you were saying earlier, it is a really important thing for people here in Beaufort County. Their survey did two things. It allowed folks to identify who they were as bicycles, bicyclists and pedestrians, whether they're comfortable on bikes, whether they're comfortable walking, and if they have any gaps or needs within their communities with bike-ped infrastructure. It also gave them the ability to map out gaps. So there was an actual map that they could draw on to say, this is where we think there should be some facilities for bike-ped infrastructure. And so as a part of that, what we learned is that about half of the respondents identified as interested but concerned. So these are people who are interested in biking and walking more, but they're not comfortable doing it, whether it's because they don't have access to facilities, or they're not sure where facilities are, or they know where they are, but they don't know where they go or how to get around and navigate them. And so what this plan hopes to do is to put resources towards that group, which is almost half of the population that responded, and to give them the support they need to get out and walk and bike more. And then the last one is to enhance the quality of life and public health, all of those benefits that we were talking about on that first slide, for the residents and community members here in Beaufort County, and give people an equal opportunity to get to the places they need to go regardless of their economic status, their race, their age, their ability to move around. So that's what drove this plan, and through the process, we'll go to the next slide, Tiffany. We came to three guiding principles. This is what really rose to the top through this exercise, so making connections. I can't say it enough, the really big goal of this plan is to make connections throughout Beaufort County, but also targeting that interested but concerned group that I talked about. Research on other surveys nationwide have shown that the interested but concerned group is the group that just needs a little nudge to, to improve bike and pedestrian numbers in your area. And last but not least, and this really holds up a lot of the plan, is the spine and spur approach. And so this is how the network has been designed through this plan, and we'll look at maps here momentarily, but there is a spine that acts as your primary support throughout the county. It starts in northern Beaufort County on Highway 17, up near the Combi, and comes all the way down 21, sweeps on to 170, it does branch out to 78 out towards Hilton Head, but ultimately goes down to 46 and then sweeps off into Jasper County. So that is your spine, that's your primary structure there, and then coming off of it, like ribs from the spine are a lot of trails that branch out into destinations, communities, economic centers to connect people to that spine. And really, the goal, the vision here is to connect the entire county, northern and southern halves of the county together. We can go to the next slide. So, to do this, we had to identify what we have and where we want to go. So you can see on the left side of your screens, the existing and committed projects in pink and purple, your dark purple are, are what already exists here, and your lighter pink colors are what is committed, what's coming in the future. On the right side, we see the fully implemented Beaufort County Connects Plan, so it's broken down by range. And within the plan, we also have each project written down, so you have estimated prices, you have estimated lengths, the operational prices, and the jurisdictions that will work to get those in. So you have roadways and the end points and beginning points written out in your plan. And they go through a five-year range, which is the green, the yellow is your six to 10, and then 10 plus is your red. We can go to the next one, I think we're going to get in a lot closer here. Yes, so, we've got northern Beaufort County, and of course, a lot of the infrastructure we have already, and that light pink is the Spanish Moss Trail, up on 17 is a part of the East Coast Greenway, and the Spanish Moss Trail making up a bulk of what we've got here. So you can see there's plans to connect, like I said, at Highway 17 from the Combi River and then come all the way down through our communities in northern Beaufort County, stretching all the way out to Hunting Island, connecting to that, that gem in the crown for our state park systems, getting people safely to Hunting Island. We've also got connections in Ladies Island, reaching up Middle Road, and up Sam's Point, past the roundabout there, and connecting into Port Royal, so that folks can get across the bridge safely on bicycles and get out to the Spanish Moss Trail if they would like to. We also have connections going through Beaufort, the city of Beaufort, can we go back one? Thanks, Tiffany. And connections to schools in Port Royal, connecting the Cypress Wetlands and the park with the farmer's market there, and then also out in the Laurel Bay area, we've got connections on Joe Frazier and Castle Rock, and then on to 170. And 170 is, again, that spine, it's going to connect the northern and southern halves of the county, and now we can scoot to the next slide. So showing our southern half of the county, we've got our primary connection, our primary vein on 170, bringing us into the Bluffton and Hilton Head areas, and there are some out there in Defuski as well. We didn't leave Defuski out because there is some demand for crush-and-run path on Defuski, so people aren't on these sandy roads, have an easier time moving around on Hay Point Road and some of the, the beach access roads out there as well. And then from 170, moving down 46 through Pritchardville, and then in the other direction, out towards Jasper County. And there's lots of great pathways already in the southern half of the county, which is something to be very proud of, but we are filling in some of those gaps and connecting to, on, I think that's Sawmill Creek up there, with our, some of our boat launches, connecting those facilities by bicycle and pedestrian pathways. And the next one shows some of our more regional connections into Hardyville. So this is where we worked with Jasper County and Hardyville to identify some of the planning they've been doing since 2018 and, 2017 and 2018, connecting into the trails that they identify, and how we can work together and regionally to really get some of this going, so that our students can get to USCB out there on 278, and to the TCL branch out there on 278, and if they wanted to, people could go all the way out to the hospital in Hardyville or into downtown Hardyville. And it would just, if you can imagine, folks being in Hardyville and being able to bike all the way to Hilton Head and back if they wanted to, it's kind of an exciting idea. So this is really driving the motivation to partner up and make sure we can regionally work to achieve some of these things. We can go to the next. So this plan identifies, like I said, all of these trails. There are 139 miles that are identified, that are going to cost approximately $84 million to achieve. One of the really important parts of the plan is that it identifies funding sources. It would take a lot of different creative funding sources to get this done. So you've got foundational grants, CDBGs, penny sales taxes, federal district, or discretionary grants, and we would need to pull from a bunch of different pots of money to get this done and work regionally to get this done, so your different municipalities can partner up to do this with the county. So that's an important part of the plan, and on our next slide, is we also identify policies that can take place. And mirroring off of the comprehensive plan, there's an, an action matrix as well at the end of this plan, so that we can keep track of the progress we make and who to work with that identifies partners and steps to take. I think some of the four, the four most important policies that have been identified within the plan is one that we're working on right now today, which is to get this adopted in Beaufort County and all of the participating municipalities. Bluffton's actually already adopted this by resolution, they did that in September, on September 14th. The town of Port Royal will begin hearing it this week, and this month, the city of Beaufort and Hilton Head Island will also begin hearing it, and we're getting on the schedules for Jasper County and Hardyville as well. So that's number one, we want to get this adopted as an appendix to the comp plan. There's another important recommendation of identifying or creating a staff position to help carry this to fruition, so that it doesn't just end up on a shelf somewhere, that we do see some progress identifying, picking out the various trails and getting them implemented. Another really important one is considering to, the consideration of re-imposing a capital one, or a 1% capital project sales tax on the 2022 ballot. And then another one that's already underway, that was in our top four, is coordinate, coordinating with LATS, and their long-range transportation study to get these pathways in their plan as well, so we have as much redundancy as possible. And we can go ahead and skip to the next one. And one of, one of the things that's not in this slide, but that I did want to make sure we all understood, is that SCDOT came out with a memo this past year in February that really prioritizes local transportation plans, and so having a bicycle pedestrian plan on the front end for future road projects will be really helpful to helping us get these bike-ped infrastructure implemented in those projects early on. It won't be a struggle after the fact.
It won't be fine.
Yeah, it'll be something that we can start from the front end. So it's, it's really timely that that came out and that we were already working on this, so that we can take advantage of that new initiative and priority.
Okay, hopping it up for some questions about it? Councilman Glover, did you have some? Paul, Councilman Somerville?
Yeah, I just want you to know that you, you mentioned, imagine pedestrian, I mean, cyclists leaving Hardyville, going to Hilton Head. I'm imagining pedestrian cyclists leaving Hardyville, Hilton Head, and coming to Fort Fremont.
Yeah.
Okay, so I need to make sure that we not only look at Hunting Island, which is the state park, and that traffic going there, but I want to direct some traffic down to Fort Fremont as well.
Okay. I think it's a great idea.
Yeah. Thank you.
Councilman Somerville?
Yeah, that's right.
The maps were outstanding in this report. I think we all want things like Spanish Moss Trail to cross Rebut Road to Port Royal, I mean, that's one of those immediate things. But I'm wondering, like, on Highway 170, if we have pathways, would they be adjacent to the existing road? Is that what was envisioned, or would they be more like what they have on Hilton Head?
It would be really similar to what you see south of 278 on 170, near Sun City's entrance. Between 278 and 46, there's an adjacent pathway off of the roadway.
Off the main road.
There are some, you know, water, wetlands crossings there as well, and so it's, it's a really, I've ridden my bike on that portion, it's really lovely to have there, and I think that's the vision from 21 all the way down.
It'd be a lot safer, probably.
Yeah, I, yes, I would agree. The, the challenge will be the bridge, the Broad River Bridge.
And what about the bridge to Hilton Head?
Yes, so that, and I'm sure you all have been really deeply in tune with that, is a big part of this. So the bicycle pedestrian infrastructure that's being implemented on that bridge to Hilton Head is included in our mapping, it's in the next, it's in the early range, because we're anticipating that coming through sooner rather than later, but yes, that's an important part.
So you need a motion from us on this too? Is that correct? No? Chuck's, Mr. Ed?
It's part of-
It's part of the comp plan, so we're good. Okay.
One more question, Matt, Kim. Even, even now, today, there, there are a lot of cyclists that are coming, and they really are brave people right now, getting on the road. Is there anything that we can do now, either through the county putting up kind of signs on the road, or the state putting up signs, just through, we're buying motorists that, you know, and I've, I've seen share the road signs and that sort of stuff, is there any way we could, you know, enhance that somehow, so that people are always conscious that there are bicyclists on the road? It just, because it's very dangerous being out there on a bicycle right now, yeah.
And I agree with you, and yes, I think there's some partnerships that can happen to help improve signage, and that is a part of this, is to improve wayfinding signs and education throughout the county to make sure people are keeping it front, front of mind, whether they're on a bicycle or walking or in the cars, but I agree with you that having more safety measures out there to make sure we're keeping everyone safe.
And staff, your committee, I'm sure you get some members from rural community who may not even be thinking about bicycling, but by having them on a committee, they might encourage that community to look at cycling and bicycle safety and stuff, so. I got a road, you know, I just talked about it, but lands in, you know, years ago, I took some four H's down to Ford from Penn Center down, it was, it was dangerous, there's no, you know, we went out early Saturday morning, but traffic was good in the morning, but by the time we got back after lunch, it got very hectic there and stuff, so, yeah, I only did it one time, you know, but it'd be good to have that kind of activity on, seeing out there as well. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, number 11, I think our county administrator's going to read that one, regarding discussion on the status of the Southern Beaufort Beautification Board.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've, we've had this discussion before over the last few years, there's been some hesitancy to do, to deal with this particular issue. As I understand it, the Southern Beautification Board was established by county council some time ago for the purpose of going out by and large to raise funding, to do landscape projects along 170 and 278 in southern Beaufort County. Essentially what they, based on the time that I have spent with them, going to their meetings and all, essentially what has occurred there is that they're just basically reviewing landscape plans, that staff prepares, Nancy Moss and the Planning and Zoning Department does a great job working on that, reviewing encroachment permit applications with DOT, and authorizing Nancy Moss to go out and, and do that work. I'm not sure as county administrator now that that's a worthy exercise or a necessary exercise by a board or commission, and I think it's time for council to start evaluating the continued need for that entity, given the fact that they are not out and have no desire to go out, and actively fundraise to try to get private businesses to donate money to do landscaping in the meeting, mediums of 170 and 278. We've done some things with the county, we used some tree fund money, when people want to take down trees in developments, they have to pay money into the tree fund, we've used that money for that. We also, if you all recall, the solar project out in Dale, had some, had a little bit of pushback on that recommendation that I made, that the company that couldn't meet, couldn't pay all the tree fund money, enter into a development agreement with the county, and they donated $475,000 for landscaping south of the Broad, $475,000 north of the Broad for landscaping around, and then in two years, they have to give another $200,000 to the county for us to use however we see fit. So we've used some of that $475,000 to finish off other sections of 278, but there's no money to do that. They've made requests the last couple of years to have money budgeted through the general fund for that. I'm never going to recommend, as county administrator, that we do that, partly because not only do we have to spend the money to put the landscaping in the median, but DOT requires us to spend money to do the maintenance on those sections of the roadways once we do that landscaping, and they don't give us any money back for their reduced areas of not having to mow and things like that, and I think many of those sections cost us in the neighborhood of, you know, $200,000 a year to maintain that landscaping and those, to mow the grass out there and things like that, because we can't do, we can't generally do that with our crews, because we're just not set up from a safety protocol, so we, we contract those out, usually goes to the greenery or some company like that. So I don't really, I'm not really asking for any action today, I just want you all to consider this. The Beautification Board meets on October 21st, they're going to have this same discussion about whether or not they want to continue as a board, so it'd be my recommendation to you all that you, and I'm glad to answer any questions today, that you let them hold their meeting to decide what they would like to do with themselves, and then we would come back to you all in November, and if they decided, if they recommend to you all that they disband, then we'll start the process. the process through your committee in November of giving you the ordinance to dissolve that, that board if they come back to do that. If they don't decide to do that, then we're gonna have to have a real hard discussion as, uh, with the Natural Resources Committee as to what you all would like to see done. Our staff has the capability of doing that work. Nancy Moss is, uh, really gifted in doing those landscape drawings. She can apply for the encroachment permits. She doesn't really need anybody to give her oversight or recommend what to do. Uh, she's fully capable of doing that, uh, as a part of the planning department's, uh, responsibilities, if, if that's what you all desire to do. But that would be my recommendation that we let them meet on October 21st.
Okay.
And then we can, uh, give you an update, uh, at the November, uh, NRC meeting and you all can decide then what you want to do with that, so.
Does anyone have any questions from, uh, from Mr. Greenway? I know they've had attendance issues too, sometimes.
They've had attendance issues. They've canceled the meeting a lot, um, because there's just not items for them to discuss every month. That also is a burden to staff because we have to monitor that and we have to send out, you know, even if they cancel the meeting, we have to send out cancellation notices to the media saying it's been canceled. If we have a meeting and we have to put together agendas, send those out. And usually the meetings don't last, whenever we do meet, they don't last more than, you know, 20, 15, 20 minutes at the most, so.
Any, anybody have any questions? Appreciate the discussion of that. Thank you.
And, and Ms. Brock may have additional details about the meeting stuff there. I'm not sure she had, um, mentioned that to me, but I don't know with, you know, with her, um, situation right now. She's had a chance.
You touched it. You touched on the fact that they, they haven't been in compliance with the requirements for quarterly meetings for quite some time.
Oh, okay. So they're not meeting their own, their own charter? Okay.
Right.
No ma'am. And I believe the ordinance for that, for that board was in the packet.
Okay. Well, thank you. We'll see what they say on the 21st.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right, we have two appointments before we go into executive session. Um, one is to, to fulfill a partial first term on the Beaufort County Planning Commission. Do I hear a motion? This is, um, Southern Beaufort County Representative Armin Wall. You have a motion to nominate?
I assume he applied to-
He did, he applied. He's, um, meets all the requirements.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Without objection, he will be appointed for a partial first term to the Beaufort County Planning Commission. Then we have, uh, two individuals to the Rural and Critical Lands Preservation Board. One is, we'll do these together. Kenneth Frazier for District Nine and then Ford Balth- Baltholo, I hope I say that right. District Nine to, will be a swap to represent District Eight. Do I have a motion to appoint these people? We, we need-
Some.
Okay, that's made by Councilman Glover. Do I have a second?
Second.
We, we need to fill these vacancies and, um, the representatives were agreeable to that. Okay, without objection, those two people are appointed. And now we need to go into executive session. I'll, I'll read what we're gonna discuss. Uh, first one is persuaded to South Carolina Code Section 30 dash 4 dash 70 A2, Discussion of Negotiations Incident to Proposed Contractual Arrangements and Proposed Sale or Purchase of Development Rights on Real Property Known as Middle Road PDR. And then number 15 is Discussion of Negotiations Incident to Proposed Contractual Arrangements and Proposed Sale or Purchase of Development Rights on Real Property Known as Linden PDR slash Fee. And after that, if we have any matters arising out of executive session, we'll re-adjourn in here. So we will move, we're gonna move to the smaller, the smaller room.
And I'm about to open the, um, the room for everyone to join the executive session.
Okay.
We need a motion.
We need a motion.
We need a motion to go in executive session.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Somerville, a second by, uh, Councilman Glover. Hearing no objections, we'll go into executive session. Thank you.
Are we gonna come, we have to come back out here?
If we have- If we have... ...